All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is June 12, 2023. It's 5:30 PM. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during the citizens addressing the council item on the agenda. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at cityofmorehead.com. We, the Morehead City Council collectively and with gratitude, acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota Ojibwe Métis and all indigenous communities permeates this land. And with that, Madam Clerk, could I get a roll call, please? Ryan Nelson.
President.
Matt Gilbertson. Heather Niesmeyer, here. Laura Karun, here. Deb White. Larry Selgivold.
Here.
Steve Lindas.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Shelley Carlson. Here. And for those who are evil, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right. With that, City Manager Molly, do we have any agenda items?
There are no amendments to the agenda, Mayor.
And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move Niesmeyer.
Second, Lindas.
Niesmeyer with motion, Lindas with a second. And we have a council member who is attending remote, so that means we do a roll call for every vote. So could I get a roll call, please? Niesmeyer?
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
Lindas?
Yes.
Selgivold?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Right. And the consent agenda passes. Moving on to recognitions and presentations. And the first one, which I think this is part of the reason we have a very large audience in attendance tonight, is our Morehead Award, and I will turn this over to Lisa Bodie.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson and council members. Tonight, we are here to honor Pat Leonard's with a Morehead Award. Pat is a musician and mental health advocate, and I think that's a pretty neat combination. He uses his time to shed light on positive community engagement opportunities, often donating his talent and time to benefit concerts and the patients and staff at C.C.R.I. He also often teams up with other area musicians, some of whom are here tonight, for different events and showing the value in bringing communities together through positive activities for people and projects in need. The nomination for Pat's award came from Chris Larson, who wrote in the nomination, "His dedication to his community, his strength of character and his overwhelmingly big and open heart have yet to receive the public accolades I believe he has due." During the pandemic, Pat enlisted the help of a friend with a flatbed truck and hooked up a P.A. system and drove to local elderly care facilities to provide them some music and a connection to the outside world when it was badly needed. To anyone who knows him, this was not surprising because both as a solo act and as a bandleader, he has donated countless hours of performance time to various charity events through his career as a musician. What a lot of people might not know is that giving back to his community really begins every workday at C.C.R.I., where Pat is a respected and treasured licensed mental health practitioner and often performs for the staff and clients, always bringing them such joy. He also used the connections he built as a local musician to launch the annual Hot Peppers for C.C.R.I. fundraiser back in 2016. To date, those efforts have raised several thousand dollars to support C.C.R.I. And he was proudly nominated for the passionate and powerful force that he is for good. So with that, Pat, I will ask you to come forward, and Mayor Carlson will present you with the Morehead Award.
And Pat, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you very much for having me. And I want to thank Chris for writing that amazing letter. He's always had a very elegant way with words. I couldn't have been here today without the, it's always, you know, the people, the friends you keep and how I was raised. So I'd like to thank my parents, who are in attendance tonight. And I'm fortunate, I knew my parents were coming. I knew Chris was coming. I knew my wife Jessica was coming. And the rest are a surprise, so I'm a little taken aback. But pretty amazing. Before me are some friends, family. I have my mentors. I'm just very honored and I'm humbled to be here. Thank you.
Everyone go that way about two feet. There we go.
I've never met Pat, but now I can count him as one of the wonderful people in Morehead that I've been able to meet. And I'm so excited for you and all your family and friends. All right. Moving on to the second presentation of the night from Cass-Clay Food Partners. And I'd like to ask Michelle Jackson and Janice or Janice, how do you say it? Janice Tweet.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us. That is a hard act to follow, but we're glad to be here for that great award. We are with the Cass-Clay Food Partners, and we are co-chairs for the Steering Committee and wanted to give an update and an overview as to who the Cass-Clay Food Partners are and the work that we are doing in the community. So thank you for having us. So with the time that we have with you tonight, we are going to do a brief overview of the food system, give you a history and timeline of the Cass-Clay Food Partners, and then dive into the Cass-Clay Food Commission. So the history of the commission, their purpose, and current work and accomplishments that is currently happening with the Food Commission in our community. So what are food systems? As you can see by the diagram there on the right, it looks complex. Some may call it complicated. It's very multifactorial, but truly is an interconnected system that influences nutrition, food, public health, community development, and ag. And truly, it does involve that farm-to-fork process and everything in between, but it also encompasses the processes, policies, the infrastructure involved, and many, obviously, mechanisms that go to feed our community. So both the history and timeline of the Cass-Clay Food Partners, it was actually formed back in 2010 through a joint agreement essentially between the public health departments in Cass and Clay County, as well as extension in both Cass and Clay County. At that time, they were called the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative. So quite the title. And then in 2013, they worked with Metro Cog to write the Metro Food Systems Plan. And one of the first recommendations that came out of that food system plan was to form a food commission or a food policy council. And that was really hoping to strengthen the local food system, improve access to healthy food, and address issues in food systems policy for our region. So then moving forward, after that, in 2015, the Cass-Clay Food Commission was formed. And so that involved seven jurisdictions. So the two counties, Cass and Clay, and then five cities within those two counties. And again, they really were looking to address and discuss food policies and to really bring those issues back to their local communities to hopefully move some of these positive initiatives forward. In 2017, they did do some reorganization and decided to change the name to the Cass-Clay Food Partners, which is what we are now. And then they also brought on an Action Network component to really get out into the community and engage people in our community to educate and bring more awareness to food systems. And throughout the course of the Food Partners and the timeline, there's been a different variety of funding sources. It was a block grant coming out of the North Dakota Department of Health. There has also been some Partnership for Health funds. And most recently, we are receiving funding at a national level through a community of practice that Janice will talk about shortly. So this brings us to our overall network. And so this is a nice visual that we like to share to kind of make the whole structure a little bit simpler. So as you can see, the Cass-Clay Food Partners, we are the big umbrella with the three different arms. So the Cass-Clay Food Commission, that was formed back in 2015. We also have the Steering Committee, which Janice and I are a part of. And then Food of the North, which is at Action Network. So the Cass-Clay Food Partners really sees a strong, healthy, and vibrant food system with the mission to improve all levels of our community food system to assure that residents have access to safe, nutritious, affordable, and culturally-based foods. And all of the information that we share today, and then there's even more, can all be found at casklayfoodpartners.com. And so I highly encourage you to check that out for more information as well. So just to go a little bit more in depth here on each of those arms. So the Cass-Clay Food Commission itself, as Michelle alluded to, we have seven different jurisdictions represented. So we do have representation from both Cass and Clay Counties, as well as the five cities of Morehead, Fargo, Dilworth, Horace, and West Fargo. And each year, the city councils or the commissions go and decide on which member will be joining our commission, representing their group. We are fortunate this year to have Councilwoman Niesmeyer as our representative, who's been with us on the commission since January. We do also have five at-large positions that can be held through public participation. And so we put the call out for that at the end of December for any openings that we have for the following year and really try to be intentional in seeing if we can get different aspects of the food system represented. So we've had people who are farmers, people who own businesses. Right now, we have people also who are involved with food pantries. We do have some people who just have an interest in food and some who are within hunger relief. So just trying to get a really good perspective and a full spectrum of voices who are heard during this time. We also have our Steering Committee, and this is a bit more of a continuous group. It is mostly, or started with, representation from public health on both sides of the river, and then as well as extension on both sides of the river, so NDSU and University of Minnesota. We also have a few others who have come in. I'm in as a representative with the Great Plains Food Bank, representing the hunger relief side. We also have representation from NDSU Research, which is great. Adam Altenberg is also our connection to Metro Cog, as they're still a big piece of the Food Partners. As Michelle said, we also have an Action Network called Food of the North. So this might be something that you've seen in our community or been able to participate in. It is a monthly meetup. They've been hosted at 7:01 most recently. They're the first Friday of the month, eight o'clock. And they just try to bring in different speakers to talk about different aspects of the local food system. So in June, we talked about who was coming for the Red River Market, just doing a preview day of what to expect this year from the market. They've also done things on food insecurity, the Green Initiative from the University of Minnesota, a whole spectrum of things. And they do monthly, with the exception of July and August, they take off every year. So something to just look out for this fall when it resumes in September, if you're interested in coming out and just connecting with community members and learning more about local foods. So back to the commission. There's a lot of words on this slide, but we just wanted to highlight some of the work that we've done since we started in 2015. And so one of the big pieces of that work has been putting together blueprints and issue snapshots on different local food systems issues to take back to jurisdictions so that they can utilize that information and implement something, a policy change, within their community if they so choose. So the blueprints are really trying to give a good snapshot of understanding what an issue might be and seeing how other communities who are similar have responded to that issue in the past and what policies they have implemented. One of those such blueprints that we put together was on backyard chickens, back when Fargo passed it originally. And we were able to share that information with council members here so that you could utilize that information as you wanted in determining your own backyard chicken policy here. So you can see, we've had a number of different ones over the years: hunger and food insecurity, gardening, community gardens, farmers' markets. And that's all information that exists on that website, casklayfoodpartners.com, if you're interested in learning more about any of those snapshots. In the past year, we were also able to work with a lot of the different jurisdictions and get some food system language put into comprehensive plans, which was really great to just see that kind of being embedded in how the communities are choosing to grow, move forward, and make sure that local foods are going to be a part of the plans moving forward. We also just like to highlight that during the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, when everything was just kind of up in the air, unknown, people are having a lot of supply chain issues, not understanding where to get food. People are also really wanting to support local. And so we took that opportunity to gather information and share it back out to the community. So we had a resource document going where people could get connected to food sources, whether that be free resources that were coming up or if they wanted to connect to local farmers, just trying to make a one-stop shop for people to go and see what resources were available in the community. And we also hosted Facebook Live events to just share updates. As we all remember, everything was changing so rapidly during that time. We just wanted to stay connected and do what we could to make sure that people had the knowledge and access to what food system things were available during that time. Currently, so our Food Commission meets five times a year, and we just take a couple months off in the summer. We meet every other month without that. And just some of the recent topics that we've been talking about. Last month, we were lucky to have L.I.R.S. come and talk about their new garden initiative that they're working on, their welcome garden. We also did a discussion of the social determinants of health, really taking that step backwards to see how everything kind of relates back to food system, whether it's somebody's environment that they're living in, their health, the access that they have to grocery stores, just all of those components that feed into living a healthy lifestyle. We've also talked about food insecurity, cultural food initiatives in the community, and a lot of other issues. We're always looking for new ways to connect and share more information at our commission meetings as well. As Michelle said in her portion two, we are also fortunate to be selected into a nationwide community of practice. So we're one of 11 different regional food policy councils around the country who are coming together for 18 months to learn from each other and share best practices so that we can continue to grow and strengthen our food council here. We started it in November, and so we've gotten right into it now. We're kind of almost to that midway point, have had a lot of great learnings, and really look forward to learning even more to bring back and share in our community. We've also done a video project. We really just wanted to make sure that information about the food system was getting out. So we worked with the City of Fargo to put together five different videos to showcase some of the areas that we've worked on and just kind of do a video explaining who we are and what local food systems are. So there is a QR code there. You can visit that to check out those videos, and they are also listed on the City of Fargo YouTube page. Last thing we want to call out. We are this year also hosting Coffee with the Food Commission events around the jurisdictions. And we are in June doing one here in Morehead with Commissioner Food Commissioner/Councilwoman Niesmeyer at MB Johnson Park. That will be coming up on Wednesday, June 28 at 4:30. So we invite you to join us or to share that out with people that you are also, who might be interested in local food topics. It's really just an event opportunity to come together, talk about what issues are important to people so that we can have those local foods issues on our radar as well. And that wraps up the presentation we have for you. Again, we thank you so much for your time, and we'd stand for any questions there might be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of really great information. Thank you for sharing. Any questions from the council members? Janice, thank you so much for coming and providing this information. Moving on to the next agenda item. I believe Ms. Lisa Bodie, our Governmental Affairs Director, will be kind of setting this one up for us.
Introducing it, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Fauzia Addy is here from the Immigrant Development Center, and she has a presentation on a project that she is working on called the Morehead Cultural Mall. So I absolutely let her cover that, but I wanted to let you know that later on your agenda tonight is our legislative recap. And then, following that item, there would be an opportunity for you to make a decision, an authorization, to submit a funding application to the state on behalf of this project. So just kind of wanted you to know that there'll be more coming after the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Fauzia to share this exciting project.
Thank you for having me. My name is Fauzia Addy. I'm the Executive Director of Immigrant Development Center. And I'm excited to be here tonight. I would like to share with you the work that I have been doing and what we have been working hard in our office. We have been working so hard and did groundwork on reaching out to the state and reaching out to our legislative to bring a cultural mall to Morehead. This cultural mall will create opportunity and job creation for our community, New American in particular. So one question that I was asked was, what is the difference of the cultural mall? The cultural mall is a little bit different than regular malls. These cultural malls, they are housed in one place. Different, you know, services for New American projects, like if it's, you know, gift shops, grocery stores, including different, different businesses, tax return places. New Americans have their own ways of kind of maneuvering around this community, and they have their own resources. And so for us, we would like to propose an idea that will create opportunity for our New Americans. It will create 32 businesses, 72 jobs. And it will be a space that we are looking at up to 30,000 square foot, where if we get your support, that we will be taking our next steps, which is doing a feasibility study where the market will fit. You know, also, we will do, you know, the business plan finishing and also getting fundings for the projects. We have approached different, different ways of looking funding. We approached MMCDC, who have New Market Tax Credit. They already sent us their paperwork to start on it. We also submitted bills through the state in the House and the Senate to support this project. And I'm here in front of you tonight to ask for your permission. This project will be very wealth-creating, multi, you know, families, helping them in the future to become self-sufficient in our area. It will also create an income that their income will be higher than the income they are right now having. Also, this project, it will give opportunity to New American entrepreneurs to start a business and practice and then go out and own bigger businesses. This project will allow the New Americans also to become, you know, understand how to maneuver around in this community and understand how to run businesses and how to look for loans and how to be self-sufficient rather than depending on welfare and on being what they call working poor. So I need your support tonight. This work will create opportunity. It would not take anything away from the City of Morehead. It will bring jobs. It will bring opportunity for New Americans. And it will give us a sustainable place here in Morehead that we call home. So thank you for having me today. If you would like to know a little bit about our organization, our website, immigrantdevelopmentcenter.org. I've been doing this work for a while. We started this project 17 years ago in here in Morehead. Our central initiative was our fiscal agency when we started this job. So we have done this before. Also, the International Market Plaza is a project that we worked on in Main Avenue. And so we are asking your help and your permission and your, you know, also, you know, advice, anything that you can tell us to move forward. That's why I'm here today, and I'm very thankful you gave me the opportunity to come. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Fauzia. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Niesmeyer.
Fauzia, I just want to thank you for putting together this proposal and thinking of Morehead for this opportunity. When I had the opportunity to go door knocking, I met a lot of individuals who were looking for an opportunity to start a business and just hadn't had that. And during our comprehensive plan, our planning process, there were lots of comments from a variety of individuals looking for opportunities. And perhaps they hadn't had experiences like myself and didn't look like me. And so I see this as a wonderful opportunity, and I'm excited to support it tonight. And I just want to thank you for putting the work in and bringing us this exciting opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Fauzia. Moving on to number six, the approval of the May 22, 2023 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Lindas moves approval.
Second, Karun.
I have Lindas with a motion, second with Karun. And roll call vote, please. Niesmeyer?
Yes.
Nelson? Karun?
Yes.
Lindas?
Yes.
Selgivold?
Hi.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
The meeting minutes have been approved. Moving on to citizens addressing the council. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the council at this time? Any citizens who wish to address? Any citizens who wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none. Move on to number 10, economic development, and I will turn this over to Mr. Derek Lapointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Excited to kind of share a little bit of a program, an economic development program that recently went out about a month and a half ago through the West Central Initiative. This has been probably about two and a half years in the making to finally get these funds available for Main Streets in the West Central territory that they serve. So funds are right now with the West Central Initiative that came through DED. This was allocations that DED in the state of Minnesota put through the previous legislative session, which looked at $20 million for greater Minnesota to assist with Main Street initiatives. And we're happy to say, at that time of trying to get the funds, we assisted West Central in that main application to DED, explaining and expressing some different opportunities that existed along our corridor. Highway 10 corridor from Moorhead to Bluffton received $1.8 million dedicated to that program. West Central as a whole received $3.4 million. So we're excited to see a large chunk of it go to the Highway 10 corridor. What you have in front of you today is really looking to assist with a couple of different projects that are down our corridor with some ownership transfer, et cetera. But I think I'll focus on a couple of different things that are really exciting about this. So far, the application deadline is June 26th. We know of at least seven applications that will total at least $1.4 million of requested funds for Moorhead. So we're extremely grateful to be working with a number of different businesses and eager to see if we can get as much funds as possible for our Moorhead businesses. This is a direct funded program to businesses, so the public really isn't involved besides providing information and helping and the assistance of the application. But we are looking as a part of this presentation here just to assist with those applications and make sure that our businesses have the strongest foot forward to secure those funds for their future projects. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lapointe. At this time, I would actually look for a motion to approve the resolution, and then during that, I would open up for questions or comments.
Move to approve.
Lindas, a second.
Okay, I have a motion from Karun and a second from Councilmember Lindas. Questions or comments from council members? All right, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Karun?
Yes.
Lindas?
Yes.
Selgevold?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nisa Meyer?
Yes.
Right, and that resolution carries and is passed, and I would imagine that if businesses are interested, that they would contact you. Is that correct, Derek?
Yes, please, and thank you for that. If you are watching or if you're listening, and we've been trying to get the word out as best we can, that application deadline is again June 26th, 4:00 PM. Again, everything is handled through the West Central Initiative, so if you do have questions, we're able to try to answer them as best as we can here locally, but if we need to go to the source of West Central, we certainly can do that. But we want as much of that money to stay in Moorhead. Again, it's the Highway 10 corridor. They do have a little bit of a buffer, so it's a mile to the north and south of those corridors, but they are looking to essentially look in those urban areas and revitalize Main Streets. So thank you for saying that, and yes, if you do have questions, please reach out to Economic Development or Downtown Moorhead, Inc. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lapointe. All right, moving on to number 12 under the Parks and Recreation Department, and this agenda item, I will turn over to our Parks and Rec. Director, Holly Headcamp.
Hello, thank you. Paul Feigner is here with me today, our Public Works Director, to help answer any questions you may have. But we are so excited to announce today that we are hoping to proceed forward with building an inclusive playground. Started out being a $1.1 million project in 2019. It was brought to strategic planning, and the council at that time had it as a number one project in strategic planning. So now what we're proposing is after five years of fundraising, we've probably reached the limit of where we can, we would like to build it and just downsize the project. So the project in front of you is a $554,000 project, so we'd like to enter into the agreements to do that build, but we also would like to propose a location change. And past council approved the change, or a location that would be next to the Miracle Field. We would like to, because it's inclusive, we would like to put it closer to the admin building where the bathrooms are right there, and also so that the kids who are out there playing soccer, the siblings, and baseball can use the field also and truly have it be inclusive for all groups. So we will continue to fundraise. Not included in this phase is the Picket Fence, which is part of the, instead of a monument sign, the fence will be engraved. So the group continues to fundraise for that, knowing how important it is to recognize those donors. A few to mention is Jen Troska led the group as the parents' group. So they were the key fundraisers, the group that spoke to the media and so forth. And then I worked on some grants. Kevin Van Dyke with the Horseman Foundation is one of the larger donors at $10,000. Jeremy Brown Family Fund and the Moorhead Kiwanis Club, all are $10,000 donors. As I said, it's looking to do Phase Two possibly into the future. There's room at this location to do that, but at this point, we're going to go forward with Phase One and continue to fundraise. The next project will also be that fence. So I'm not sure if you have anything to add, Paul? Do you want to add who the contractors are, maybe?
Yeah, so for the work itself, Dakota Playground will be, oh yeah, for the work itself, the contractor, Dakota Playground, will be doing the construction of it, and then there's also some underground work. So with starting the contracts, like a lot of construction this time, lead time on material is a big thing. So the playground equipment should be available early September. Before then, we'll be able to do the underground work and the concrete, and we're hoping to have the project done in October of this year.
Thank you, Paul. And maybe you want to reintroduce yourself to everybody so everyone knows again who you are?
Oh, yeah. Paul Feigner.
New, but yet back again.
Oh, yeah. Paul Feigner, Public Works Director.
Be with that. And with that, I would be looking for a motion to approve this resolution, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Move to approve.
Okay. Echo motion from Councilmember Hendrickson, second with Councilmember Nisa Meyer. Are there any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Lindas?
So downsizing it, but it looks like there's plans or potentials to actually complete Will that cost extra, or will it just be the?
It will be the other $500,000 would have to be raised to move forward with the expansion. There's a number of projects have come up since then that we will begin working on in earnest at this point and then come back to this one for future phases.
And just because I'm asking for a friend, how much extra to put a splash pad there?
Splash pads are in the $200,000 range, but it depends if you have equipment that, we're hoping to put a splash pad in next to the pool so that we could use that same equipment to regenerate the water and reclaim the water. Splash pads are about $200,000 if you continually use the water and then dispose of the water. It's not very environmentally friendly to do it that way. So that number would be about 200, 300.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for being here. It's, I know where that Miracle Field is at. I'm kind of, the location, though, you've got the clubhouse here in the Miracle Field. Where would that playground go? You were talking about moving.
Yep. For the audience at home, I did put a location map in the packet that shows it next to the admin building between the street and that admin building that's out at Southside Regional Park. So the Miracle Field is off quite a ways to the north and a little bit to the east. So it isn't that close to the Miracle Field. It's much closer to the admin building and the fields.
Yeah, I can picture it, and I just brought my sun gab and a sock, or there's some kind of picturing it there. So, yeah. So it's a little bit further back, if you're telling me.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's further to the south.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Councilmember Nisa Meyer.
So with this excitement now that we're breaking ground and people will have it fresh in their minds, not that the playground shindigs that Jen and the parent group have been hosting each year haven't been really fantastic fundraising events, but is there going to be a maintained account to receive donations, or is that going to take a side seat because other projects are coming up?
I think we will always leave that account up at this point, able to give. It's listed in the FM Area Foundation also, so that can remain as long as we have Phase Two. Future councils can make that decision down the road, but like you say, as it's there, we have planned a Phase Two, so we're hoping to move forward. But as far as our time goes, as far as staff time and other time, we're going to be looking at the Matz and Grandstand Project and also the Ramke Project where hopefully is going to be a splash pad. Some of that has to be fundraised for. You'll see a lot of fundraising for the Library Community Center. So I would say it would take a backseat for now.
But the fund will still be there if people are moved after the excitement, and that's great to know that that's still going to be there. Holly, thank you very much for making that abundantly clear for folks, should they be inspired to help out Phase Two whenever it comes up. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Other comments or questions from council? With that, I have a motion in a second, so roll call vote, please.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Selgevold?
Aye.
Lindas?
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
Nisa Meyer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Right, with that vote unanimously passes, and I would say that this is something that's really exciting. I was on the council when that was made a priority. So breaking it up into two phases, I think, makes a lot of sense because then we actually have something to start with. And like Councilmember Nisa Meyer said, if people are inclined to want to continue to contribute, I believe a post, Councilmember Selgevold, I think it's $100 a post for a donation?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to administration, and this would be the 2023 legislative recap, and I will turn this over to our Governmental Affairs Director, Lisa Bodie.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson, members of the city council, and special recognition of the members of our legislative work group that include Mayor Carlson, as well as council members Karun, Lindas, and Hendrickson, and our city manager, Dan Molly, all of whom made various trips to St. Paul and have participated in a number of legislative initiatives. The last city council meeting was the last night of the legislative session. They finished that night at midnight, and so we had some preliminary discussion about what was happening, but we wanted to make sure that we knew what was being finalized before we counted our chickens. So there was, I'll just recap things briefly. There was a wonderful increase in local government aid statewide of $80 million, which equates to an additional $900,000 for the City of Moorhead, and that will be an annual increase on top of what we receive. There was one-time aid given for public safety, which was $300 million and equates to about $1.95 million for the City of Moorhead. We noted that recreational cannabis was legalized, and that has a number of implications on the city as well. And also another outcome of the legislative session this year was a statewide family medical leave program, and that will be implemented, as I understand, in 2026. With regard to the specific things that the City of Moorhead was seeking on behalf of our city directly, we did receive a bonding allocation of $11 million for flood mitigation, which continues the work that we've been doing, and it is sufficient to fund a flood wall on First Avenue North, complete the 11th Street, or excuse me, the North Moorhead Flood Mitigation Program, and it also funds relocation of a lift station. And so we still, we were hoping for $24 million, and so we have $13 million to go. And so one of the things you approved on your consent agenda was the submission of an updated and continued request to the legislature for the 2024 session through the Minnesota Capital Investment Program software. So that now will go in, and hopefully we'll get the remaining work, remaining funding necessary for our in-town flood mitigation, which we've been working on since 2009. So we've spent 14 years getting to this point. So what I think the talking point for us as a community is that we want all neighborhoods in Moorhead to have the level of flood protection that they need, and right now we're short of that goal, but we made good progress this year. Another project that when we, when we sat with the council and put together our legislative priorities that we didn't know we needed was additional funding to close an inflation gap on the 11th Street Underpass Project, and that was accomplished. It was accomplished through the transportation bill, and MINDOT challenged us to come up with $12 million. We changed some project timing around to raise a couple million of that, and then this additional $10 million came through the Transportation Committee. So I know that Mayor Carlson testified on that, and we did a lot of work with the chairs of the Transportation Committees and things, too, and our delegation was integral to accomplishing this and the other things that we were able to accomplish. So we thank them for that as well. And then on policy initiatives, we requested an exemption from sales tax for the building materials for the Library Community Center, and that was approved as part of the tax bill. And so that will save that project about $1 million, which now can be invested in other things that make the funding approval and the sales, ironically, the sales tax authorization go a little bit further for the project. So that is in process, and our finance department will manage that process, and we're excited about the money that that will save and that, you know, that can be implemented by the construction manager that you also approved a request for proposals for tonight. So lots of things happening on the Library Community Center. One thing we always keep on our agenda is the Border City Programs, the Enterprise Zone, and the Disparity Reduction Credit. With all the other work that was going on, there weren't a lot of questions raised on that, but we know that with outcomes from the 2023 legislative session in Minnesota and in North Dakota, that we need to be keeping an eye on that competitive playing field that we have with our neighbors in North Dakota when it comes to attraction and retention. And so we will be working on a review of all of those issues related to the outcomes of those sessions because we exist in a very competitive environment, as you are all well aware. In addition to the legislative work group that we have here at the city, I want to thank our legislative consultants at Fliridian Hood and Fredrickson &amp; Byron because they are our eyes and ears for all the times that we are not in St. Paul and when weather prevents us from getting there, and they just have tremendous knowledge and experience based on, you know, all the work that they do for all of their clients, and these are just such rich working relationships. And I'll also give thanks to the Economic Development Authority because they include funding for those contracts within their annual budget. So always with gratitude that we express that. There's a number of meetings and touchpoints that are listed here. I think I missed a couple, and I will make those corrections, but if anybody- I think I missed a couple, and I will make those corrections. But if anybody notices anything else that is helpful for history, please let me know. There is just documentation that we do about what the, the actual language of the, the bills are. And I look forward to continuing this work and advancing our initiatives as we move forward into the future. With that, I'll stop for questions before getting into the Cultural Mall.
Any questions from councilmembers? Or Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Dan, and thank you to the staff for all the good work. It's a lot of funds brought in, and it's, I think it's some of the most I've seen since my tenure on the council. So I appreciate your hard work and making Morehead move forward. So I appreciate it a lot. Thanks.
Thank you. And I also just want to echo, Lisa, as a Governmental Affairs Director, I don't know how many times you went down to the cities. I know that it's probably double, if not triple, what you've probably done in the past. And so as Councilmember Hendrickson said, this brought really integral and very needed and vital funding to the city to complete some of these projects. A little disappointing, we didn't get all of our flood mitigation, but I guess 13 and 15 years will be our next saying for next year, 13, 15, I don't know. Come up with something a little more catchy than that. But I also want to echo a thank you to the EDA, and then also to our lobbyists. I know that they continually are communicating with you of what is happening down in our Legislative Session. And it was moving really, really, really fast. And, and also to City Manager Molly, the Attorney Shockley, and to the staff. And then expressly, I want to thank our Legislative Representatives, Representative Keeler, Representative Joy, and Senator Kupac. Wasn't able to meet in person with Representative Keeler, but Representative Joy and Kupac, I know adjusted schedules a lot. And don't think that I even went down a time where I didn't meet with Senator Kupac. And there was maybe one or two times I missed with Representative Joy, but they worked, all three of them worked very hard on behalf of Morehead. So just a huge gratitude and thanks to all three of them. You know, they stayed up some late nights working on legislative items, so.
We have a wonderful team.
Yes. Thank you. You go ahead.
Do you want me to move on to the next item, which is a resolution to authorize staff to submit a preliminary Minnesota capital investment application on behalf of the Immigrant Development Center for the Morehead Cultural Mall. You heard the presentation from Fauzia earlier tonight. The project, I think, is exciting on multiple levels. It brings additional commerce to Morehead. It creates cultural pride, and it provides goods and services that right now people are shopping elsewhere for. The IDC is seeking Minnesota state bonding funds, which would be going through the state's general obligation bonding program, and it would require public ownership of the building in perpetuity. And there would be ongoing requirements for the operations of the building. There, there is another method of seeking these funds for nonprofits, but as I understand it, it's a smaller amount of funding. It would be, when they talk about cash projects or cash bonding, it's a smaller amount, and that is typically available using that method. And as you can imagine, I'm sure it's highly competitive. Preliminary bonding requests for the 24 Legislative Session are due June 16th, preliminary requests. On my part, more review is needed to fully determine the eligibility of the project for bonding funding. And until that information is known, we aren't asking the council for a formal resolution of support. I think you're just being introduced to the, the project at this time. And so we, we need to get a little more information. But what we do have in your packet tonight is a resolution that would authorize staff to move forward with this preliminary application. That is the preference of the IDC, that they would prefer to submit under the, the city's bonding request system. Full, we would come forward with a resolution requesting your support for the project at a later date. Final edits to bonding proposals are due in October. So we've got some time to work through and, and make sure that we have the same understanding about the project. So we have, we have time to work through those things. I would say, based on my presumptions from the past, is that since flood mitigation is not complete, that would continue to be the city's number one bonding priority, and we will be asked to rank those applications. So that is the assumption that I am going under. I just wanted to mention those things as we work through this process. So the resolution that you have in your packet would just allow us to move into the next stage of consideration of this project. And with that, I will respond to any questions you have. And Fauzia is with us as well. And perhaps, you know, there might be questions for her at this point, too. So I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bodie. I actually have two questions. Well, actually, one that either, perhaps either you or City Manager Molly can just kind of go through as a reminder of what is our typical process of adopting legislative priorities, because this is a little bit unique and an uncommon way to get this process done. And then also, perhaps, if we could get some information as far as, you talk about the building being owned in perpetuity. What occurs and what happens if the Cultural Mall, say, in 20, 30 years ceases to exist, and now the city owns a building, what happens with that? And, and what is that process?
So as far as prioritization, the last time the city funded, and when I say perpetuity, I think it's one and a half times the useful life of the facility. So perpetuity is maybe a little bit strong, but it's still a very long time. So I would need to look into that a little bit more. Again, this, you know, this, I, I haven't fully vetted or researched this project. That's a very good question, Mayor. The last projects that we've done of any, you know, with, with some similarity are the Blue Stem Center, which was created for Trollwood in partnership with Fargo Public Schools. And I think they were called the Future Builders, if I'm not mistaken. And then the other project is the building that you're in right now, which was the Cultural Society of, of the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County for the permanent exhibit of the Yum Com Center. Those projects are both before I had a leading role in some of these discussions. So I need to familiarize myself a little bit more before I can fully answer that question. The, the last so many years, we've been working on flood mitigation, and we've been working on multiple underpasses and so, and a transfer station for solid waste. So we've really been focusing on the bare bones of, of our public infrastructure. And so this is an area that, you know, we need to educate, I need to educate myself, and I need to help educate you. So I, I don't know as far as prioritization. Typically, the last several years that I've been doing this work, you set your legislative priorities in the fall. But this Minnesota management and budget process is typically due in June every year of alternate years. And so, but we've known what our priorities are because we've had such long-range funding requests. So it's a little bit out of, out of our, our typical the last five or 10 years, or 14 years. So that was, okay, did I answer both your questions or just one? One was about prioritization, and one was about what happens if, you know, if something goes wrong or something changes. I would think we would need to find an alternate use of some kind that met the state's requirement, or we would be required to repay funds. But I'll, I'll have to get back to you with a definitive answer on that question.
Thank you. And I don't, I didn't know if City Manager Molly had anything to add to that, or?
Nothing to add, other than the, the youth hockey arena would be the other. That would have been state capital bonding, is that correct?
I don't know. Was it like an individual request, or was it through a state program?
I understand it was through the state program, the old Mighty Ducks program for women's hockey.
Thank you. Councilmember Lindas?
Just echoing your words, actually. We have been so focused on physical infrastructure and flood, flood mitigation protection. And it's a breath of fresh air to actually have a project that is working actually on infrastructure, but it's, it's to support the social infrastructure of our community. And hopefully, we'll get the flood mitigation, a final push, and then we can actually really focus on, on aspects of our community such as this. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Second, Neesemeyer.
I have a motion in a second. Any further questions or comments from council, Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just, it might be a basic question, but if we do submit this preliminary, will it affect our funding for flooding? Would they take a different look at our request for funding? Like, they're getting this much money, but, you know, they're asking for 13 million for, for flood protection. I mean, how's that looked at in St. Paul?
I don't think we can answer that definitively. I think what we can do is prioritize our requests.
Because right now, I think flood protection is probably our number one priority. And I don't want, you know, anything to disturb that or, you know, put a roadblock. So I'm, I'm not quite sure about this preliminary application. You know, I just, we, we need the flood protection, some kind of, and there's a lot, it sounds like there's a lot of unanswered questions there. So, and it's, it's no fault to anybody, but I'd like a little bit more information, so.
I'm just, Councilmember Lindas, is there any other councilmembers before I call in? Councilmember Lindas again. Councilmember Lindas?
I don't know if Ms. Bodie could have also answered this potentially also, but I, this is just a preliminary, or, sorry, this is just authorizing staff to actually spend time to actually find those additional answers to your questions, Councilmember Hendrickson. So I think that this is, we're, we're going to still have the opportunity to look at a more complete proposal and see how that, that impacts, you know, other aspects of our legislative priorities.
Ms. Bodie, I didn't know if you wanted to respond at all to that.
I, I don't think so. I will say that, you know, the, the Jasmine Childcare Facility has made some inquiries about bonding as well. And we don't have a defined process for this yet. It's something I think that our Legislative Work Group should, should discuss further and bring, bring some guidance back for when we are making, you know, final prioritization. So it's just kind of something that, that's arisen as a result of this.
Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's an investment application. So is the application submitted? Is mine?
A preliminary would be submitted, and it would, as, to the, through the Minnesota Management and Budget. It's the start of the capital budgeting process and, and capital requests process. And, you know, it would go in initially without a formal resolution of support, that we would come back for that later. And then applications can be modified up until a date in October. I think it's the 18th, but I, I don't have that in front of me right now. So it would be a preliminary application.
And is there a dollar amount attached to that?
The request is, I understand, is 5 million.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. What happens if we miss this June 16th deadline?
It is a deadline. And so I don't know what would happen next for the project, if they would choose to submit a different way. Or I, I really can't answer, answer whether they would be able to submit it later. As I understand it, all projects that we want to have considered need to be submitted by June 16th. But, so I'll say that, on one hand, I have seen cases where someone will bypass that process and submit a bill independent of the capital investment process. What this process does is the capital investment committees of both the House and the Senate make bonding tours in the late summer months. And this would put the project on the tour. And it would be, this is the basis upon which the governor prepares his recommendations for capital investment that come out in January of, of the new, new legislative year.
Right. Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't get me wrong, this is a great project. And I think it, it served Morehead well. I think it's a terrific project. I just don't want to impede anything that's going to help us secure our flood protection. So that's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
Councilmember Karun?
Thank you. If we find more information, or as you're gathering information, Ms. Bodie, and we decide we do not want to, we do not want to submit a final application, then it would end there, correct? Or?
I believe it would end there. It would probably be, it, the city could possibly, I would have to ask this question of the state, but I suppose we could withdraw or just not provide that letter of support. I, I don't know.
Any further questions or comments? There is a motion and a second on the table. So with that, roll call vote, please.
Lindas?
Yes.
Seljivold?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Neesemeyer?
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe that this is a simple majority, is that correct? Okay. So with that, then the resolution passes. And so that would be the resolution to authorize staff to submit a preliminary Minnesota capital investment application on behalf of the Immigrant Development Center. So with that, moving on to mayor and council reports. Any councilmembers having a report to make? Council or committee and board meetings? Councilmember Karun?
Just wanted to share that in May, I had the opportunity to be part of the Minnesota Young American Leaders Program that was put on by the ITASKA Project and Harvard Business School and the Carlson School of Management. It was a great opportunity to meet with emerging leaders from all across the state of Minnesota, who really focus on cross-sectoral collaboration. So got to meet folks from Duluth, Rochester, St. Cloud, Mankato, the Twin Cities. And there was a cohort of eight folks from the Fargo-Morehead area that, that took part in that, that process. So just wanted to share that we're out in the world doing things.
Thank you. Other councilmembers have any reports to make? All right. For mayor reports, I apologize, or Councilmember Neesemeyer?
Marvelous. Thank you. I had the awesome opportunity to attend a number of things. I was at the ribbon cutting for the MSUM Oceanarium last week, and that was phenomenal. I'm excited to have so many ribbon cuttings going on in the city of Morehead. That's just fantastic. There's another one coming up this week. Super excited. And I was Um, and I was invited to judge a Scouts Tournament on a super hot day, the June, June 3rd. But unfortunately, there were no Scouts to judge because apparently everybody was on vacation. But I just wanted to thank Jennifer Jamison for asking me to come out and be a judge. Um, the Derby Girls had a wonderful Savannah Cup Derby still during the day, had a wonderful setup at Matt's Automotive. Um, and it was a fantastic, um, Pinewood Derby event for the Girl Scout Derby. Um, also, the, at the end of March, nope, May, wrong, M month, um, the Clay County Collaborative was able to approve their fiscal year 24 budget as well as hire a new executive director of the Clay County Collaborative, um, Jenna Kaylee. And so she'll start July 1 and all of the funding projects will get their new contracts. And we will support, um, Clay County teens and families. And I'm very excited to have that process done for my first time as a new member of the Clay County Collaborative.
All right. Thank you, the council members. All right. Yes, and appreciated that, uh, your willingness to take that since I wasn't able to be there. And I apologize that it was hot. That was not why I passed. Everyone knows. And I would agree, the ribbon cutting at the Oceanarium was amazing. And I know that, uh, several other council members were also in attendance at that as well. Um, on the 23rd of May, I did a welcome to Minnesota Public Health Association. Um, this was the first time that the Public Health Association for the state of Minnesota had been in Morehead. Uh, so they were, um, really excited about, uh, being at Concordia. They really enjoyed the site and, um, have talked about coming back in their cycle of locations and suggested they come back after our downtown had been redeveloped. And so they're looking forward to that. Um, there was a metro flow diversion finance meeting, um, on the 24th of May. And on the 25th of May, the Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority and the Diversion Authority Board, um, bigger kind of component of that is a last month of the last five, or last month, five parcels for landowners closed on, um, land negotiations and 49 farmland leases were completed. Forty of those are in North Dakota and nine are in Minnesota. Um, if people are looking for construction and/or property acquisition status updates, you can go to the fmdiversion.gov website. Um, there are also a few of us who participated in the listening session with Steve Grove, who was the former decommissioner of Morehead, or Minnesota, I should say, and is now the CEO of the Star Tribune. Um, he came up to really seek advice and information about how to incorporate the stories of greater Minnesota, um, within the Star Tribune. And hopefully we can, uh, maybe get some more coverage of greater Minnesota, um, down into the metro. Uh, I will let City Manager Molly talk about, um, our presentation that Eventide University on May 31st. Also was able to judge a pet show at the library. Um, on June 1st, attended the Midwest Egg Summit for the Chamber of Commerce on June 6th. On 7th, we met with the Casc clay Community Land Trust Executive Director, which was really exciting because they're looking and their goal is, um, probably to have 100 locations within the city of Morehead, uh, which is really a great opportunity for individuals who are looking to, um, get into home ownership, um, but maybe don't have the resources, um, really to be able to, to participate in, in the, uh, home ownership. And this provides that avenue for them. Uh, the Triple RDC, the Red River, um, Dispatch Center, that meeting was held on June 8th. Biggest one there is that the budget was approved. And last but not least, um, city prosecutors, Cheryl Dyson, Steve Beatlesbacher, Lieutenant Mike Detloff, and Fire Chief Jeff Wallen and I were invited and participated into the Just Grants Program through Concordia. And it was a program on the Native American, Native Americans and the criminal justice system, um, providing information about boarding schools and the historical and generational trauma, um, that our Native American neighbors underwent. And a special shout out to Delores Gabbard and Ricky White for sharing their stories and educating us, um, on all of those issues. It was a, a great evening. That I will turn over to you, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll just, you had mentioned Eventide University. Uh, the mayor and I had, were invited to present to a, a full room at, uh, Eventide for a program called Eventide University for folks that, um, live and stay at Eventide and, and to the greater community. And I'll just say that it was a wonderful conversation about, kind of, the history and the context and where we're going with Morehead. I learned a lot. In fact, uh, afterwards, I was left just thinking, boy, if anybody needs to feel cherished, lifted and protected, they should go to Eventide University. It was really a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. Uh, the, I want to mention the groundbreaking of the Rotary Natural Play Hill and Bike Park. Uh, that is, uh, happening this, uh, week, Thursday, June 15th, uh, at 4:00 PM at Riverfront Park. Uh, there's a, a reception afterwards at River Haven right next door. It's going to be very exciting. And, um, just what a, what an incredible and fun asset for the, for the downtown project. Um, the Morehead Community Center Regional Library Design Session, uh, the architect team is, um, doing an open house workshop, uh, later this month, uh, at the Morehead Public Library on June 28th from 4:00 to 6:30 PM at the Morehead Public Library. So if we remember during, uh, the Yes 56560 campaign or a number of listening sessions and different, different things that occurred, a lot of that has been pulled together. The council awarded the, um, the, uh, the bid to the architect team. They've been pulling all kinds of information that is planned to be shared and there's going to be a discussion. Ahead of that, uh, Rob Remark, um, the architect from JLG is going to share kind of where we're at, at the June 26th council meeting ahead of, um, that open house. In addition, there'll be all kinds of, uh, information going out, um, through local media, social, e-notification, the like. So we're hoping for a large engagement there, uh, around, um, design and process for the Community Center Regional Library. This is where a lot of detail, uh, and putting together the project will happen ahead of what is hoped to be a, um, well, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. More at the next meeting. Uh, let's see here. I want to also mention that on June 13th, uh, which is tomorrow, um, there'll be a lot happening. There's the farmer's market right down here at the Yum Com Center. And then right next door is, uh, River Arts, which will be taking place at, uh, Memorial Park. So we got the River Arts and all those activities that happen and Post-Traumatic will be playing at that event. Want to let folks know that per the Minnesota legislative session, um, city offices are now closed on Juneteenth. It's an official holiday in Minnesota. Uh, that day is Monday, June 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and I think the June 28th, 4:00 to 6:30 at the library, um, I think they were talking about, you know, redefining the big ideas during the 56560 campaign. It was a lot of ideas. It kind of had an idea about what rose to the top, but, uh, as City Manager Molly said, it's about now refining and, and all the ideas that were, that came from the public. Unfortunately, we can't do all of them because we don't have the money or the space. So it's refining them and really honing in on what is feasible and doable. So that is what that event is on the 28th. Um, with that, we do not have an executive session tonight. And is there any new business?
No, no new business.
With that, it is 6:47 and we are adjourned. Thank you, Morehead.